Call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order for November 8th, 2017. Please note for the record that all the commissioners are present. If you would, please stand for a moment of silent meditation and the pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Renetta. How are you?
Good.
I'm good. Consent and approval, please.
We have eighteen exonerations for $4,009,3284, minutes for the regular meeting on October 25th and November the 1st, work session, special work session on 11/2. Vouchers for General County, $343,869.05, Cole Severance, $11450, 911, $254,000, Chestnut Ridge Park, $74960, Camp Muffley, $32450, Mason Dixon Park, $94949, assessors valuation, $8,076867, law enforcement forfeiture, $1,082.82. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $6,46161, 911, $50972, Mason Dixon Park, $33598, assessors valuation, $62650, for a voucher total of $36404644. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities, West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, Banning Dilapidated Property Enforcement, Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and Claywattel Public Service District. Fiduciary orders for November the 8th, 2017.
Thank you. Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. I don't see any listing, but is there any introductions of new employees or personnel changes? Hearing none, we'll move to comments from the public. Now open for comments from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. You might want to go over it, that way they can see you better.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, and the commissioners. I want to first thank you for what the jobs that you're doing. And I wanted to bring you up to date a little bit about a meeting that we had had with Secretary Smith from the DOH. And when I say "we," I mean Senator Beach, Delegates Fleishire, Williams, Pows, and myself. We traveled to Charleston to speak to the secretary, basically to tell him thank you for the work that he had done on the bond issue to get it out, but also to voice some concerns that we may have been hearing out there in the rumor mill. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. In the rumor mill, some of it was that they may look at this project, whatever the new term for it will be, whether it's the Northern Bypass or whatever, the hundred million dollar project, that may get pushed back a little bit onto the back burner because there doesn't seem to be a consensus in Montague County as to whether we feel that's the proper use of the money. We, as the delegation, at least from ourselves, assured him that's not what we're hearing out there when we talk to people. When we looked at an 80.4% passage rate and everything that was listed on there, I feel that was voted upon as a package. That's what the people voted upon, and if we look at delaying that, they're not saying to remove it, but possibly delay it and put it as a pay-as-you-go. I have huge concerns with that. And I don't think that's what the public wanted, so we conveyed that message across. The message that he had sent back in return to us was asking that we let the citizens of Montague County know that if they support that and in that, that they need to let him know that we sing, you know, "We're not going to get 100% participation in anything. We're never going to get 100% agreement on anything. You guys don't do it, we don't do it, and I just, I don't know who's going to accomplish that." But with that said, I respectfully would ask that the county commission take it under advisement. And I don't know what your feelings are, but I do know that you've got your ears to the ground, and you know what's going on in the public out there as well as I do. And if you feel that this is what this community is needing and wanting, I would request that you send a letter to the secretary informing him that what your thoughts are on it and what you're hearing out there as well as I am, because he needs cover in the fact that he wants to hear what the people has. He actually has offered to come up again for, to speak and to listen to the community, not as much in a forum as a look at listening and give the information out as to what they have. Now, on the other side of it, Mr. Williams was also in that meeting, Donnie Williams. And we'll tell you that it's very encouraging to hear Mr. Williams speak about what's going on and the way we're looking at some of our road problems in this area. And he's putting together a plan that will address some of these issues that's out there. And I mean, I'm not speaking just from the Western End, but I will tell you that the thing that was encouraging, he made a statement to me and showed some on paper that within three years, his goal is to have Route 7 from Morgantown to the Wetzel County line repaved, ditching done properly, and the maintenance. And that's huge. I will tell you that that will go a long ways to doing, but also other areas. They're looking at Smithtown, they're looking at the areas altogether. Now, what's making this possible is the passage of this bond in that it frees up some money that was on projects that was already, as you guys well are aware. But the public needs to be aware of the fact that some of that money is freed up now, that they can put it to other uses, onto the maintenance. At the same time, you know, there's money that the bond is not using at this point in time because we do not have the bond sold, so that money where the taxes are being collected on the fees that was increased is giving additional money coming back to these districts. So it's very encouraging to see that we're starting to see some of that. We may not get as much paving done this year as we anticipated and wanted because at some point in time, the plants are going to be closing down soon. So with that said, I just wanted to bring that message to you from Charleston. They very much want to do what we want to do in this county, but we've got to at least have a voice that's speaking pretty much in unison as one, not a whole bunch of fragmented voices out there being heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Delegate Statler. Really appreciate it. I think it would be appropriate to ask that this letter be prepared and placed on the agenda. We can discuss it at a work session if you wish.
Yeah, we can talk it under unfinished business, that way no one says we've done anything inappropriate.
That would be fun.
Sure.
Okay. Now, is there any other comment from the public? Hearing none, we will close comments from the public. Colleen, do we have any grants?
We do not have any grants.
Do we have any correspondence, Renetta?
Yes, sir. It's in your folder. We have one item. This is a follow-up letter to the State Tax Department on the FOIA that we did about two months ago.
Yes.
Been working with the prosecuting attorney, Perry Christopher, on finalizing the letter. She has sent me back some edits. You've got it in your admin folder. More or less, what we're doing is establishing that the county has a material interest in the information that we are requesting.
Okay.
And hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Hopefully, this is received a little bit better than our last.
Okay. Good. Is there any other correspondence?
No, that's all.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
Yeah.
I will ask, is there any information on the Dish DirecTV suit that is currently going on? Have we received any update on that?
Actually, yesterday, I have not got a chance to review it because it is several pages. Yesterday, late afternoon, it came in the mail, a letter from AT&amp;T, which owns DirecTV.
Okay.
And from this first glance scan that I did, they are not opposing our petition through the FCC. But they are asking that any decision that the FCC makes, they be allowed to roll it out in their time because of the expense that they are going to incur on updating the customers.
Okay.
So I will give you a full report on that next week.
Yeah, I think that's more than fair.
Positive, at least. Thank you.
Since we said unfinished, you want to now bring up, since we have talked before about the road bond issue in the letter, do you want to now talk about?
I mean, I think, quite frankly, that the commission would stand to prepare such a letter, or if you have a letter that you wish to prepare yourself, you know, and be presented to Commissioner Smith.
I'm a little bit perplexed why Charleston needs something from us.
Affirmation?
Affirmation, isn't that what our MMPO is for? Isn't, I mean, shouldn't what they have put forward be important? Instead of, it seems like this is, I mean, you talk about whether people's vote was for this or not. It had a lot to do with how I thought about the bond amendment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff. Yeah, please go forward. It's fine.
I will tell you, Commissioner, that the MPO's role in this is still very much alive and well. But if you look at the MPO and the role that they do, the MPO is basically put in place for federal spending. Any money that's spent at a federal level, even if it's a penny, has to have the blessing of the MPO to move forward. And I'm sure that they're still very much in sync with everything that's happening that's out there and going on. But their concern came from a meeting that was held in this area. And I think that Secretary Smith said to us that he was thinking out loud in a meeting and said, "Well, maybe, maybe we ought to think about what's going on in Montague County. Maybe there's deeper things that we need to study out." Our fear is that we don't want to back this up. We needed this thing yesterday.
Yes.
And so we just want to make sure that we don't get held up. And as pay-as-you-go, as you know as well as I do, Commissioner, if we go to a pay-as-you-go and it gets backed up, they're not saying that's what they want to do, but that was just one of the things that was discussed, this thing will never happen, especially in my lifetime. It's not that long, and I guarantee you, there are others in this room, it won't happen.
We don't want to look at the West Run Bypass again. That's the way I look at it personally.
Yeah, and I will say that the MPO's role is still going to be very strong in this. There's no doubt about it, and they said that. But at the same time, you know, there's so many different groups out there right now that we all need to at least understand where we're coming from so that we, one of us is not saying one thing and another is saying another. We may not agree upon the exact route, and the study has been let out forbid to do the study, to look at it more, to narrowly define it. And they admitted that mistakes was made in the purple line that we all saw, that this kind of took a broad brush. It should have been a little broader, they probably should have went that wide, and that way they could have caught everything.
Should have been two inches.
Yeah, they admitted that was not a well thought out, but they didn't intend for that to happen the way it did. But they're going to look at that and come back, and there's lots of time for comment for people to say, you know, "Well, if we just go this way or that way," they can look at those type of issues.
Well, we certainly can, you know, write a letter to that effect, however, it would be nice to have the commissioner come here for a meeting so he can see that, you know, talk to all the people, not just a select few that had an axe to grind. And that's what he left here with the impression that it's not important.
Well, and I think you're correct, and he did mention that he is more than willing to come back up, you know, when we're ready to do that, like I say, for an informational meeting.
Right.
Not only what they could share, but what the community can share. And in that meeting, that night, I attended that meeting, and it wasn't fully represented. I think that, I think there were some misunderstandings that Secretary Smith took out there, which he and Donnie Williams done a great job at that meeting because they got a lot of bullets fired at them, and they answered everything the best they could. They didn't try to dodge anything. I'll give them credit for that. But at the same time, there was several people in that room that was there for information because social media had some things out there saying one thing, there were some letters that was circulating that said one thing. And I think there was a lot of confusion as to what was going to happen. And to tell you the truth, some of it was. That purple line that was drawn on there, and where did it go, and how that would do. Well, that just never got, even though I think about six times they answered that question that night saying, you know, "That mine doesn't necessarily mean where we've got to do all these studies, we've got to do environmental impacts." They'd done a great job of trying to explain that, but some people kept going on to that issue. And there was other issues that came out that night that had nothing to do with the bond passage. Clearly, was, a lot of folks were speaking about that that evening. So I think there's just a lot of misconception, but to answer your question, he is willing to come back up and sit down and see, you know, what input we have into it. And I think we need all, we need the Chamber Transportation Committee there, we need the MPO there. If there's anything we need to do, is get this thing done and get it done right and get it out of there.
I agree.
And meet as many people's needs as we can.
I'd like to move that we put on the agenda next week, a strong letter of support to Secretary Smith and Don Williams, and then also carbon copies to the cities and probably to the Chamber. And then, okay, well, I'll do that then, I'll do part two, then I'll discuss. And then, if possible...
It's been moved and seconded for discussion.
Yeah, if possible, anything we could do to help you, Joe. So the other groups, we would also request to send the letter, because I believe you're right, the vote was clear, the public was clear. At 80%, I think we were all surprised, and we want to make this, move this forward. The other reason why I want this letter is because we want to also show that we are also moving forward with the Chaplain Hill study. So we don't want to think that one supersedes the other, we want both going at the same time. And I think that would help both projects.
I think, if I could ask...
Yeah, go ahead.
I would also include the Governor and Secretary Thresher's on those communications because I think they're a strong part in this, is how it's going to be.
I think that's great, okay.
It's been properly moved and seconded for this letter of support coming from us to the Governor and various super secretaries. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Is there any other unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll move to new business. First of all, consideration to approve the authorization of funds to repair and relocate an out-of-service fire hydrant located near Mason Dixon Historical Park under the West Virginia Department of Highways right of way. I went out there first with DOH and met with them, and then I believe, Sean, you have a report on that?
Yes, I have an update. After our meeting last week, I went out there and I met with Linda Chisler, who's the Claywattel PSD Director, I don't know if that's her title. But we met with her and her crew and showed her, I took the picture, we went out there to look at it and show where we'd like the hydrant to be moved to. For a little bit of background, the issue is, is the hydrant is currently on private property.
Private property, yes.
And there's been a dispute back and forth. It was broke by one of the local volunteer fire departments, and there's been a dispute back and forth in regards to who's supposed to fix it. They looked at getting it fixed, but it's not that simple, it needs to be replaced. So we do need a fire hydrant there. There aren't that many in the Western End, so when we have one down, we want to try to get it up in service as soon as possible. It's right next to a trailer park, and then across the street is our park. So Monday, Linda called me because I went out and I asked her to go ahead and give us a quote for moving the fire hydrant into the right of way and provide that back to us. She did provide that back to us. Monday, she called, and as part of their process, they get ahold of DOH and tell them what they're doing. When they talked to DOH, it turns out that we, to get it into the right of way, there's no way we can do that. We only have 15 feet from the center of the road, which that telephone pole, which you looked at, isn't even in the right of way. So it'd be to the front of that telephone pole, which would make it just a foot or so off the road. So that doesn't seem to be an optimal suggestion. So I asked Linda to talk to Mr. Lapo. Ben Lapo's the owner of the trailer park there, and he's the actual owner of the fire hydrant. If he would be opposed to the county replacing it, and if we entered into some sort of agreement where we could have, the public would have complete access to it, but acknowledging that it is on his property. Linda talked to him, gave me his cellphone number. I called him back and had a long conversation with him, and he's perfectly willing...
Oh, great.
...to let us go ahead and replace it. I told him I just want to talk to Phil and make sure that we formalize something that says, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to replace this fire hydrant, it now becomes, the fire hydrant now becomes county property, but you acknowledge that we have access to it because it's on your private property." To his credit, he thought it was in the right of way too, so he wasn't aware that it was private property. So we have three different options. One would be to replace the fire hydrant where it is on Mr. Lapo's property, and then enter in some sort of agreement that we would, the public would have complete access to it. Two would be to move it, which now isn't an option, we were going to move it into the right of way. The first option is $6,000, the second one would be $8,000. And then the other option is moving it across the street, which would be $14,000.
Yeah.
So it seems the best option is to replace the one that's there, and I could work with Phil to draw something up. He said he's fine with a gentleman's agreement, and he goes, "If you come up with something that's, you know, long and detailed," he goes, "It's just going to take me a long time to look at it." So he wants to keep it as simple as possible.
Right, yes.
But the thing is, we want to get this done as soon as possible. So with your approval, I can go ahead and have Linda go ahead and move on replacing it while simultaneously working with Phil to just have some sort of agreement.
Move to approve.
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded for approval of this action. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next, consideration of requisition number 14 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District sub-account. Renetta?
Yes, this is the monthly requisition to, it's the increment that is created by the district that will go back to repay the bonds in the University Town Center excise tax district at the amount of $169,933.52.
Move to approve?
Second?
Properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next, consideration of requisition number 14 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District sub-account. Renetta?
Yes, this is the monthly requisition to, it's the increment that is created by the district that will go back to repay the bonds in the University Town Center excise tax district at the amount of $169,933.52.
Move to approve?
Second?
Properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Or is there any other new business before us? Hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials. Hearing none, I would like first for Renetta, if she would, to give a report on the County Commission Association Legislative Roundtable that she attended last week because it was held during our meeting. If you would, Renetta.
Sure. So it was held at the North Central Regional Airport, hosted by Harrison County Commission. There were several counties in attendance, Harrison, Barber, Mon, and Preston. We only had two representatives from the state legislature, sorry, Bob Beach from the 13th District and Delegate Amy Summers from the 49th District. We discussed the 2018 legislative priorities as voted on by the County Commissioners Association. The first is the support for, they are supporting reducing the fiscal impact of regional jails on counties. And this is something that they went after last year, and I don't know exactly where it fell in the process, but it's changing the date of custody for inmates. Instead of it being when they're sentenced, it is the day following the commitment order. So the DOC would start picking up the tab a little bit sooner, and this is going to help on reducing the jail cost. They gave us some statistics for all the counties. I mean, we've been, I wouldn't say fortunate, but we haven't been hit nearly as, with as much of an increase as some of the other counties. We have seen a 62% increase since 2010. Lewis County has seen a 209% increase in that same time period. So there are counties that are way worse off than us. They think a lot of that, obviously, there's a very big backlog on the state forensics, it's state forensics lab, and I think the Governor had, or the legislator had put that in a budget to give them more money. And I believe they said at the meeting that that was vetoed by the Governor, so I'm not exactly sure if they are going to try and do that again this year to give the state forensics lab a little bit more funding. The second item is, this was a Harrison County initiative, support revision of the process for procuring architectural and engineering services on projects over $250,000. It's code section 5G. Right now, what they have to do is, the county commission would put out a request for qualifications. They would review those qualifications and select one vendor for architecture and engineering services. Then they would then have to negotiate a price with one vendor. The change that they're asking for is that instead of doing one vendor to do a negotiation with, they would select the top three candidates, and then they would ask for financial proposals from those three candidates and be able to pick, instead of having to do a negotiation with one, and then if they can't come to an agreement, then you've got to start the process all over again. So that is the second thing. And then the third thing is actually, are, something that we went after last year, that 's support the revisions to code section 60-3-9D that would require the wine and liquor tax collections remain within the county in unincorporated areas.
Right.
Right now, there's a one-mile rule, as you know, we've talked about it many times, that the municipal, one mile outside of municipality, they get the collections from that, and this would take that out of the code section. There's a couple of other things that the County Commissioners Association is supporting. Another one of our initiatives last year was the sale of county-owned property to expand that to 501(c)(3) instead of it just going to the Board of Education or fire departments, et cetera. The second one is a county-local option meals tax, and this is a Mercer County initiative that Delegate Schott, I believe, is putting forth. And this is a permissive piece of legislation that would allow counties to have a meals tax like at restaurants. So it wouldn't be forced upon the counties to do that, it would be up to the county commission whether or not they would do it. So those are the things that they are supporting. Of course, they are opposing Senate Joint Resolution 8 as currently written, and they are opposing any state mandated realignment without county concurrence or endorsement. So the regionalization that we've all heard about, we are taking the position that we are opposed, that as the Commissioners Association are opposing that. So that's rundown of what we were able to discuss.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
So another busy week. Tomorrow's is crazy. We have the Boys and Girls Club Breakfast at 8:00, have a Red Committee meeting at 10:00, the dental clinic at the Health Department, open house at 11:30, and Development Authority meeting at noon, so it'll be pretty busy. I would like to thank Joe Statler for coming in and updating us, and also thank you for the tireless work that you do on behalf of this county. That's really greatly appreciated. Lastly, I wouldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this Saturday is Veterans Day. I want to thank all of our county employees who've served, and anybody for that matter, and to steal a quick quote from Ronald Reagan, "Our nation itself is testimony to the love our veterans have for us and for it, and we thank God for them."
Thank you. Tom?
Yes, I also want to thank Delegate Statler. I think it's quite apparent with the county commission, we're thrilled to have the relationship. And I want to say, because I am the one Democrat on here, that never once has Joe ever seen a Democrat or Republican letter after his name, and he has been more than willing, and probably the finest delegate, to get back to us. And I do really appreciate that, and I want the public to know that. I think it's time that we have more of that compromise working together. I do appreciate that. The second thing I did want you to know, that I represented, the county commissioners went up to the Corridus House, and we have donated up to $5,000 for a warming center. It's amazing. It is really nice, and I really am looking forward to it, and they're looking at having some form of transportation that if the people needed from the Bartlett House to go up there, the program is excellent, and they were very appreciative. And the third thing I do want to say is, there's still a lot of confusion. We are moving forward, and I want to thank Catherine. She did a TV little post about the Mount Nearest Center Wellness Facility under construction at Mylon Park, and I posted again what's up there because there seems to be a lot of confusion that it's a WVU-run program, and I just hope that in the future, the community, we can all work together to develop programs and services because this is something that's very special, and I look forward to developing it.
To that end, I did have a meeting with our state head of extension yesterday regarding that issue as well as what we were, you know, looking forward to doing for extension. Last Thursday, of course... Last Thursday, of course, Tom and I both represented commission at the Mylan Park Awards Dinner. And Friday, all the commissioners did attend a meeting at the Daybrook Community Center Fairgrounds where we're looking to possibly enrich that, you know, that area. I also had a meeting Friday concerning the road construction on the West Ridge. I know that Saturday, the courthouse will be closed on Friday, I think that, you should note that, please, be closed. Veterans Day is, of course, the 11th, thanking everybody who has served. One other little item, this magazine came yesterday. If you've never gone to Fairmont, we will plug Marion County. This is the Feast of the Seven Fishes Festival, and there's a cooking school that I particularly love to cook, and I attended it last year, I intend to attend it this year. It's on December the 8th for the cooking school, and the festival is on the 9th in Fairmont. If you're looking for a good winter festival to attend, this is really a great event. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to adjourn. We are in adjournment. Thank you.